Alright, let's uh have a call to order please, we have a little call to establish the forum.
Mr. Manziel.
Here.
This is Fickers, here, this is Darian, here, this is Norman, this is Brad, here.
Go please, women, for pledge release. You ready, let's begin.
United States to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I understand we're gonna pull number twelve, correct?
Yeah.
So can I have a motion to approve the agenda, one through fourteen, except for for pull twelve?
So move.
Alright, uh, this is time for public comments. Uh, I am not on the agenda.
Yo man, it's feeling his age.
Still looking good to me Bruce.
Hi, you look pretty much over.
My name is Bruce Huffy. I've been recognized by the school board for all the things I've been doing over the fifty years residents here in Laguna Beach. And I've been addressing you this evening concerning sports nutrition by Professor Maxine Shadi, and also sports psychology by Dr. Bruce Ogilvy. And lastly, the great, the very strong position that we get about fifty feet of pool at our high school. I shared this with the with the principal of the high school and asked him to confer with his staff, and particularly your athletics coaches. And Dr. Shadi, you have a copy of her seven day sports nutrition that can very profoundly affect their performance on the field. Now, most coaches aren't schooled in sports nutrition. The typical coach will say, meat and potatoes, you get out there and get the meat and potatoes. It's more sophisticated than that. So I'm urging the school board to consult with all their sports faculty and have them have them discuss this with all their teams. Now, number two, Dr. Bruce Ogilvy is internationally recognized for sports psychology. There is more to sports than going out and beating the other team. It's developing a sense of values that imprint self-esteem. That means personal regard for yourself, regard for other persons, and also the environment. Calis Cogathos Foundation, my foundation is based on that philosophy started two thousand years ago by the ancient Greeks. They weren't there just to beat the other guy, particularly as we have seen in football. The concussions are beyond the reason of anyone running a school program for sports. Even the professionals are suffering from that. So I'm urging you to have your faculty discuss the importance of physical stability that developed in mind. And the last point I'm making is one, we can have a fifty meter pool. It won't cost them upset if you consult the swimming pool foundation, which will give you consultation and funds to extend our pool to Montsenita. And I thank you very much for your consideration. Jan, thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment on item not on the agenda? Very enough, we're gonna go to reports. Okay, our first report would be from our student representative, Chloe, what you got for us today?
Okay, so last week we had our school and college testing, so again that was when high graders take the PSAT, sophomores, which is me, take the PACT, and then juniors take the PSAT. Since I only, I didn't take the PSAT last year because that wasn't provided, but um I thought it was very easy. I mean, that's just for me, I heard a lot of people thought it was difficult, but it was things that I'd learned and it was more knowledge-based than I thought it was gonna be, cuz I kind of overthought it. Um, but we also had guest speakers for the seniors that didn't take the test cuz they've already taken the test or they're going to. So they had decision-making and relationships, drugs and alcohol addiction as well, some people saw it later in their third period. Um, so we also had homecoming this weekend. I was at the game and at the dance. So at the game, it was really cool because we all have like a separate class of dance, if any of you've seen it. Um, you know, freshmen do their sophomores and whatever, and normally it's kind of separating the grades and just uniformizing all the students. This time it was really cool because we had our very, um Dylan Wolf, who's very um, I would, he's very outgoing and he's maybe like the best student like president we've had cuz he's so outgoing. And got all of us together and we all chanted on the field and got a whole crowd to chant with us. And it was just the whole like, I believe we can win thing, and it was really fun. And after the fact, you know, this year we've had a preacher who helped us get this thing called Point Break together, which is all the ASB students, not just ASB, but ASB are supposed to sit in that section and get all the students to sit in that section, so we get a louder cheer from that section and it fills up the whole entire stadium. And this year we've had the biggest turnout probably in history of football at our school, which I think is really fun because I'm not one to always like wanna watch the sports, but now I'm having a lot of fun to go and see the games and sit with my friends and cheer, and it's it's a lot of fun. Um, this next week, we have the man who came to dinner, our theater production, I'm also in that. It's really, it's a very funny comedic show, really different from the last play last year at Stage Door. It it's very comedic and we have amazing actors in it, and I think you all should come. So it's next Friday at seven thirty, and there are posters outside of our of our school. Um, also, was it last week or a couple weeks ago, we had people come and put library glass walls in? And I love it so much, it's so cool. So we have different, if any of you have been in the library before, it's used to be like really open and we have like a giant pool of people. We just kind of move the furniture around sometimes, so it's a little bit of a different environment. This time it's, we keep the chairs and tables over here, then we have a cubicle section. Now it's glass walls towards the back, so there's there's two rooms here and then one over here where the section where the cubicles are, it's past that. So it's a lot of more confinement, so that people who wanna study can sit in there, because I know there's a lot of people who just enjoy sitting in the library at lunch and don't wanna study, so it's kind of loud in there. So now we have more opportunities for people to study, which is really cool. Um, college roundup was really successful. Um, it was really cool to see all the different colleges that were, I mean, they're not all the colleges in, you know, America, but we had a lot. We had a lot there and most of the ones that I wanted to apply, I want to apply to, so it was really beneficial for me to see all the requirements and the reality of where I really could go. So it kind of just opens up your expectations for like where you wanna look for, and honestly, I've like seen more opportunities now. Like I've looked into England that I never thought I would look into before. So there's that, um, so again, like the seniors this year have been a lot more accepting and it's a lot different than the years past, you know, there's that stereotype that students and grades are very unified and we're all very separate. But this year, everyone's a blend, there isn't, um, I talked to some of the freshmen and they're not as scared as I was last year of the seniors. They're just, they just think it's cool because all the seniors are helping out. And um, they don't really care about grade differences, so that's all the educational report. And onto the sports report. So our fall sports teams are in their last two weeks of Orange Coast League play. Our boys and girls cross teams are preparing for their league championship race at Irvine Regional Park next week. The girls are in the driver's seat after placing first at our league meet, while our boys team had a solid third place finish, which leaves them in a striking distance of a league championship. Both teams have had very successful seasons as they prepare for the last race at Irvine Regional Park, which qualified for the state's championship race as the team goal. Boys water polo finished an undefeated league season and played two tough divisional opponents at Palos Verde and Cabasana Valley High Schools. Our boys currently are the top ranked team in CIF Division two water balloon. Girls volleyball has remained unbeaten in league in hopes to keep that record alive tonight versus Cavalry Chapel in our senior recognition game. Our girls have one more game left against San Juan Hills High School before beginning the CIF playoffs. Boys beach volleyball has played consistently well all season. The boys have improved and played at the highest level this young high school sport has to offer. Girls tennis has one match left between them and another undefeated league season. Today's rain postponed that match, but our girls are focused on attaining that goal. Girls golf had an outstanding season finishing third in in league. Our team was comprised primarily of freshmen and sophomore players with little or no previous golf experience. Every um season with many, every seasoned girl on the team improved immensely over the fall season. Boys, girls, boys and girls surf had a record-breaking season with many firsts. We defeated St. Clemente High School for the first time in school history and beat Newport Harbor at home and away this year. We are hoping to close out the season with a league championship. We have just concluded our first grading period of the year and our student athlete performed exceptionally in the classroom as well as the athletic field go breakers.
Thank you very much.
So you were announcing on the field on Friday?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was fun.
Says, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was um, it's it's exciting, I've never spoken in front of that many people before.
You did great, thank you.
Alright, so you're getting up, so as always, you're welcome to leave, you know, you're lovely, have you said?
Just stay, walk around, study sessions.
Okay, we second to go, and then we'll move on to our group representatives.
We have no reports.
Oh, we don't need to move on to you, we can have the last one.
We have a short one.
Okay.
So um, on November ninth, CSA one thirty-one, and looking forward to visiting with Dr. Devo and Dr. Valoria at our November ninth business meeting, where they have so graciously accepted our invitation to attend. This will be a wonderful meet and greet opportunity for all of the members that are hopefully gonna be attending. Um, we're in the process of accepting nominations for our board of directors positions, and we'll be holding if need be elections at the December meeting if there should be more than two names placed in the nomination for any office. And the classified professional development program launchpad is being very well received at this time, so, thank you.
Thank you, and do we have anybody from PTA, school power, or other?
Yes. Tammy Scandarian for PTA, um, I wanted to give a little recap. I went to the September advocacy forum that was hosted by our fourth district, and they focused on LCAB. Jeff Wittemberg actually spoke and the Brown Act was talked about by Ron Waker. And I have to tell you, both of them, I felt so proud of this district because they emphasized LCAB, and I know it's required, but how we're doing, or you guys, I should say, are doing is phenomenal. So I just, I felt super proud to be hearing other other people involved and, you know, how well we're doing um with that and how you outreach is unbelievable. And then with regard to the Brown Act, I just wanted to mention, even as much as I've been involved in this district, to really understand it, I think it would be, I don't know how to approach it with the community, but I think that you guys get a lot of negative response because people don't understand what you're cap, what you're allowed to do or not to do. And for me, it was, I, because I knew certain limitations, but I don't know how you address it cuz I know there's the little spiel printed, but I think it would really take some pressure off because people understood what you're allowed to do or not to do and the superintendent's allowed to do, anyway. It was just pretty, it was open for me, and Peggy was there as well, and you know, anyway. Um, so that was great, there is another forum this Friday that any PTA members welcome to attend. It's this Friday at the Orange Unified School District, office nine thirty to eleven thirty. Um, Ron Bennett, CEO of School Services California is coming. I hadn't, I haven't seen him speak before, but I guess he was phenomenal, so he'll be speaking this Friday. Um, I wanted to remind everybody, especially the seniors, Kathy Fei's been our advocate cheering on voter registration. Tonight's voter registration deadline, so uh the increase in Orange County's seventeen and eighteen-year-olds, if you're seventeen or turning eighteen by the time, but it's time, it's been, I think it doubled from just the last year. I mean, I know it's election year, but I truly believe that efforts that have been brought out throughout the district and Orange County has really been amazing. The program that she's put in place on behalf of PTA is all the high schools.
That's for all fourth districts, all the, all the high schools?
Yes, doubled, doubled, so in one year, just from, you know, I think, and then I think it's even more so if you look at like four years ago or two years, you know, it's it's really been incredible. Um, PTA coffee break, we have a phenomenal coffee break, the last one, I know a few of you joined with that. We have another one coming up, uh, it will be on November sixteenth. And the location's to be determined, but all are welcome, kids. And I believe it's an actual evening, I have my time wrong in the morning, but I believe it's an evening one, so that kids can come as well. We'll get a beach police department, we'll discuss how to help your kids stay safe on apps like Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, and more, and give insight as to what child predators um look for and how to ensure that your kids will not be a victim. And the high school PTA had a huge listen, Chloe talked about it, but the college roundup, I know we play a part in it, we bring food, which I guess everybody really enjoys, but it was phenomenal, it was a great event, put together by everybody involved. Uh, and then the high school also, the high school PTA has Oktoberfest coming up this Thursday, the twenty-seventh. Tickets I know are still available, that's from six thirty to nine thirty, and can be purchased online. And Thursday, PTA has their sports swap, and the drop-off is on Thursday, November third. You can either drop off Thursday the third from eight to ten AM or Friday the fourth from eight AM to six PM. And the actual sports swap event is on Saturday the fifth from eight to four. And El Moro has their boot blast coming up this Friday, October twentieth, sorry, I'm taking up a whole meeting. Lots of good stuff going on, and then Top of the World actually, I think, is taking a bit of a breather after the back-to-school bonanza. Always going on, but that was amazing as well. Um, so I think that's it. I I do wanna think, I wanna think again, everybody and all, I was thinking about it as I was walking down here, I just took my daughter's volleyball games, both are doing phenomenal. Matt Sunil is phenomenal, I mean, the outreach he's done to just getting things structured, I I just think he's done an incredible job. So I wanted to mention him. Jeff, of course, is doing phenomenally well with just facilities and, you know, comments are being made constantly. And um, I know I'm forgetting tons of people, but it's it's just really, it's been a bright start to the year, even though we're probably about a third of the way through, but thank you.
I just want to comment, there's like on the Brown Act issue, it was actually a very insightful point because people will come to these meetings anytime, wanna participate, and it's really not proper to do that with the governance rules and the Brown Act, and we can't explain to them, we're not supposed to actually address them and answer questions back and forth. It's not supposed to be a dialogue, it is the meeting of the school board in public, it is not a meeting of the school board with the public. So then, when we do have a governance or a a workshop, like we just, study session, then we cannot go back and forth, and we did at the recent one, but unfortunately, most people don't go to those. And I mean, I didn't go to it when I was, you know, I'm not on the school board, I don't, I can't blame anybody. It's just that that's actually the opportunity to have a dialogue with the school board, and then the other opportunity is when they run up to you at the supervisor, and they're not along with you. No, but I'm serious, that's their only opportunity, and I think people do get pretty frustrated. I wish there was a way to explain away the fact that we're not just being curmudgeons, you know, we're not just saying, well gee, we won't talk to you, we're hiding under some veil. It's a, it's a formalized law that ties our hands in communication, such that I cannot, you know, go and talk to Jan and Dee about something even if I want to because I'm legally permitted from doing that, nor can I go around in a serial fashion and, you know, say, gee, I got this new cause I would like to promote and go one to one. So we have all these restrictions people don't know about, and there's restrictions in meetings. Um, I wish there was some way to communicate about it, because I know the public doesn't see it, and they're thinking, gosh, these are awful people who are hiding something. But it's it's a function of government that's about it, the Brown Act is there, but not for me, we've revealed Brown Act, but only once, huh?
Well, the other big, the other big issue is when we do deal with things of John Act that requires you dealt with their confidentiality, that it's really, then, you know, we really bear that responsibility that we don't reveal those things. And oftentimes, folks don't understand that there's more behind a decision than they're able to know. And there may have been a lot of, a lot of discussion and consideration where it appears to the public that it was just more cavalier, but it's not. And, you know, that is often to be one of the really hard things to see. We know so much more that went into a decision, but you can't share it.
Yes, sir. So there's like another part of it too, so there's the issue of rules and constraints of a board meeting, and then this issue about communication of board members and the necessary necessity of public meetings, which is very important, that's fine. There's also the privacy of the close session, when we cannot reveal everything we know, people say, well, your your creating, your eating has an excuse. Well, it's not excuse, it's a little obligation, we cannot tell things, we find that in close sessions.
It's an obligation.
Yeah, we have an obligation. So there's all these different constraints in this process that does make it difficult, and I can absolutely see from a public point of view, a frustration with trying to deal with a public board like this, so.
I think it looks like we're being rude, is there something we can do though, could we come up with a skit about it? I don't know.
I like Jamie's idea that it it'd be nice if there was some way we could communicate more effectively the rules that we're limited by.
We could have a study session and guess who would come?
Nobody. Nobody, and that's so good, it was such a great study session, you know, I mean, they were really good.
Yeah, no, I was there.
I I don't know, and of course, with anything, usually by the time something doesn't become controversial, people will come and they'll say, maybe, Bill, this was just an active, you know, one vote, one media, it was like a committee and surveys were done, this was done, and everything, but they didn't see it, and when they don't see it, they don't see it. So they think it was the first time we've seen it. It's, I don't know, it's very frustrating, if anything comes up with a great idea to have it, be better, good for us.
It's all your free time in December.
Well, my free time is a long time.
You can start, you can work on that for us.
Okay, so next, we have any other organizations, I guess that's it. Uh, board member comments, we'll start with Jan, since we're right now.
Oh, thanks. Well, before Tammy, Tammy also attended the DULAC meeting, and, you know, I, and we had, they're bringing in more people to share with the parents in that group. They had Alfred Learning Link that was there, and um, she told me afterwards that she'd never been in a situation where everything she said was in translation, so it was a different experience. And then they had one of the parent mentors came and spoke to them, and then that when I needed to leave, they were still meeting, but they were all on their pro books, I guess, or tablets, and they were being blocked through the district website. And how do you get to your school and how do you call these different things up? And I think they were on the page that was doing the SITDA columns, but it was really interesting and they were having, you know, really getting a good grasp of all that's available on that website. Uh, I also stopped by College Roundup, it was, it's a lot of work, it is a lot of work. And uh, at least Lynn Gregory and Ann Bergen, whoever else works with them on that, but it's uh, the folks really get a lot out of it when going to run and see it. But it made me think of with the, one of the things the speaker coffee breaks said, when he had the brochure of the school that he picked, was it Wisconsin, where he was taught in, and then he has it to picture it in the snow, it's like, they don't show you this. Because it was tied in with his whole theme of continual life transitions and how that is what we really grapple with all the time is making transitions. And so when students, they pick that school and they see it and the sun and the warmth, and then they get there, it's like, it makes the transition even more difficult because he was talking a lot about transitioning to college. That's also, cuz it's sponsored by PTA, PTA does um do so much for us in so many ways, not just the fundraising, but bringing opportunities to the parents of the district. I did stop by the dodgeball, that's, so a lot of you were playing dodgeball, you're much braver than I am. And I saw one of our, one of the teacher teams, I guess, the one teacher got the ball in the face and he was gonna cause up his glasses next. It's one of, it's our new math teacher, Jacob, is it Jacob?
Oh, okay.
So, it was, it's tough, but it's not an easy thing to do, so I appreciate those of you that are brave enough to come in here. Um, and we were watching it, my husband said, you know, they really shouldn't let them throw the ball that hard now, hi, because they were face high, goes the rest. Then, let's see, anything else on here? Um, when she, when Chloe mentioned it, I'm sure a lot of you have seen Dylan Wolf in action at the games. But it's really interesting because adults have really tried to get this school spirit and maybe around the county, the, they recognize like the top ten schools that have the most school spirit in the sharing sections. And I know that Mark, you know, who's working with that is really would like to get to that level. But it actually takes some students like Dylan that are just, I mean, besides being whatever he is, but he's super limber. So like in volleyball, basketball, I mean, you have to get him down off, he goes up those bleachers that are not open. He's, if you look over there, he's on the top, and he's, so I hope Chris has to somehow rope him in. And the referees sometimes have to ask him to stop. But it does take that kind of really precarious person to, and the students then start to join in because he's so unafraid to do that, and it's, so it's funny, so he was doing that at the football. Dancing around, I don't know, he has no, he has no joints, right? Thank you.
Okay, um, I've been thinking about our our vision statement, that we take ownership of each child's learning in our schools, accepting no limits on potential. And I, I think we're doing a great, great job in special ed. I, and maybe we're doing a great job at the high end, but that's what I hear from. And so I'm thinking about in the middle school, our math pathways, that this might be a good time to relook at those and see if we really are meeting all the kids' needs through, hear from the teachers, are we giving them everything that they need? Do students survey, are they feeling challenged? How is it all going, how how are we doing compared to other, you know, other districts? To just take a look at it again. I also am very excited about the new exhibit going on at the museum. It's the outside interaction part is gonna be put up starting next Wednesday, and it will be then up Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and so just one day like before. And I was, had the privilege of meeting with Philip Smith the third, who's doing it. And it's, it's this wonderful bent parallel lines, and he's into light with his art. And it's a perfect segue into science as well as art, and the one on the inside of the museum has a hundred and twenty degree angles, and it shows how with those angles, then it makes an invisible other angle, and it's showing you how um, light, colors and light are different than pigment colors when you mix them. So, and then downstairs, we have Kristen Leachman, who I also got to meet, and her exhibit is all about xylem, remember from your old biology, the xylem that takes the, takes the water and minerals up? Well, there's a special tree in California, and when the bark falls off, shouldn't take off it, but when it falls off, the xylem is just crazy, it makes all these weird, weird patterns. And so she, her exhibit is all about that, so another perfect fit with art and nature. And then the third, a third part of the exhibit is Anna Hills, who's a treasure of mine, just because she was such an advocate for art, not only was she a wonderful artist, I, I'm not that, but she went around to schools all over Orange County and took not only her art, but other artists' artwork and um was foremost in educating students in art. So she's a big part of it, and then the permanent collection, they've taken out some things, and it will be a little challenge for you if you go to figure out what some of these things have to do with nature as well as art. There's a connection, but with sun, it's very difficult to call it. So uh, as you know, the museum offers free tours to all of our students, and I hope people will take a peek. Thanks.
I did not get to do as much as I normally do during the week, so I did get to do the college roundup. And Lynn Gregory, the whole, this is amazing, and I got to get it not because any of my kids And Lynn Gregory, the whole, it was amazing. And I got together not because any of my kids invited me, but other kids, none of them invited me to take them. It was, it was really fun. So they wanted to know what questions they should ask and we practiced with colleges they didn't care about, which one of them they decided they cared about. We got the answers, which was really kind of cool. And, um, I'm wearing around, sometimes they felt safe and they went and broke off and then they didn't want me to come and help them. And, um, it was, it was so much fun. It was fun watching them grow. And it was amazing hearing these kids, because it was, it was a group when you were talking about how we support kids at different levels. This was a group of, um, very high achieving, um, in the middle. And you wouldn't have thought, would it be looking at college in elementary or in middle school and whatever, open that up at the high school and, you know, concentrate on engineering, you know, like just such a different take from, I don't know, being an artist, I don't want to get in a chair. And then the fact that the school helps, the teachers helped bridge that to the skill set. And it was fascinating. I was just all listening to the, the kids and all the things they're discussing, what they want to be. And I, and it's, and it's my dollars classroom, so I couldn't help but like listen and pop in with other kids and talk to them what things that they were excited about. And a few of them, I told them, I said, pick the school, you know, scared of parents, I said, pick a very expensive school and they'll be fine with this all the time. I did some of that shit.
Really good advice.
And they won't be so shocked if you say you want to go to Washington. A lot of them are going to Washington. And, um, but it was so much fun. It was fun. It was fun. And some of them were looking at the schools, the national ones. Um, even though they didn't have intention originally, but they were fascinated. Some were looking at schools in Hawaii and I just came back. So I was like, oh, I want to go there. Go back, so you see girls. Um, but it was just, it was amazing. It was amazing, the ease of it, the flow, we get to it, the, all those people in there. And it didn't seem crazy crap. So it was also, that was really my main, my main thing, really, like, you know, I'm glad. And then I did, I did get an update from, uh, Coffee Break and watched all the stuff that he passed on. And I spent my time, I wanted to be comfortable in that uncomfortable. Actually, my kids are now looking for me for it, but I'm practicing, so I could practice it with them later.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
We were, I saw you drifting.
I was hurting to drift off. I was thinking about what I was gonna say.
And then, yeah.
Yeah, anything from you like?
Uh, let's see. Uh, I too went to dodgeball. I went to the little kids versus the big kids. And, uh, and that was, it's always fun. I also, um, popped into high school and listened to Tyler, is it Dunham or?
Durham.
Durham, Durham. Um, and he was, he had some, made some good points. He was, he was interested in the kids and the kids were there, were engaged. And I'm glad that, I'm glad that there, there were students there. I think we can figure out maybe how to get more, have to think about ploy. That's the, that's the key. Um, but he did, he made good points. He was interesting. I think the kids said were engaged. Um, I would like to thank Jeff for the facilities condition assessment percentage that we are nearing. Um, that is huge. I, I, I.
Scary huge.
Scary huge. But I like, I, I mean, like Jan, we made a promise at fifth of the line that we wouldn't let our facilities deteriorate. And so thank you, there you are, um, for just keeping us informed about that because I think that is important. We're keeping a promise. And finally, I, um, popped into Thurston's NTSS meeting. I was wandering around aimlessly and thought, what the heck? Because they have air conditioning and my phone's working. So, but I have to say, it was life changing. It was the most amazing experience. The model that they are, whatever their model is, I don't, whatever they've come up with for that age group is amazing. It's phenomenal. It's, it's a safe place for teachers to share. The staff was all there, the, and the aides were there. Um, everyone's hearing the same things and discussing about these kids who aren't necessarily special needs or, you know, any, they're just kids who are having a tough time. And if anybody has been through middle school or has kids who've gone through middle school, the entire age is a black hole, right? And so the fact that the, everyone got together and that I got to see that and experience that was really awe inspiring. I, I am so appreciative and grateful for the teachers that we have, for the leadership that we have, for the, 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 uh, uh, classified staff who supports everything on that campus. It's just, um, it was really, I, I said, eye opening for me to see that here, that, and, and gratifying that we are so lucky to have a district that supports that. And that those kids, that, that every child has the opportunity to experience that kind of care. And, um.
So you're seeing what started with like the, the pyramids.
Yeah, it, this is, this, this works. It's not just a picture. It's, it actually is functional.
Being something that's in action. Right.
And the other thing that I, and it, it goes back to what Tyler was talking about, what Coffee Break was talking about, is relationships that we form. It's the, the opportunity that we have to form relationships with each one of these students in some way is so vital. And I think it was just absolutely evidenced by what I saw on Friday. And so thank you. And I think if we can move forward with that foremost in our minds, that it is the relationships, it is that connection that will support everyone going forward. So that's it. Thank you.
Oh, really? Very brief. I did attend the facilities, uh, study session as well as the next generation science. And both were excellent. I think they were just great. And I finally with the next generation science, started to understand the conversion of the way we're going to teach not just science, but math also, the way math relates to that.
Implication.
And the implication of changing completely this curriculum and the excitement, like I saw Mr. Sogo, very excited for sure. Yeah, the ability to actually have input into how they're gonna change and what they're gonna do. It was just very interesting. And, you know, I didn't get a chance to go to the college roundup this year, but it is one of my absolute favorite events. And I, I usually never got invited. I dragged myself along with the hand of a person to whatever one they're, they're going to. But it does present, gives us an opportunity to see colleges they had never thought of. And it is unusual when all of a sudden, as you mentioned tonight, Chloe said tonight, to say, oh, I was gonna, like about England, you know, maybe never, people give a thought to it in a national school before, but that could be fabulous, life changing decision. And it's certainly all out there. And I know that most of my kids found schools, uh, on the college roundup that they ended up applying to that they had never considered, had they not gone to that and seen that. So it's a really, really impressive thing. You know, I know in my white school, they take kids, um, to community colleges or the college state colleges because a lot of their kids, that's what they've been on the college campus and their parents haven't been to college. Now, even though a lot of our parents are college educated, there are some who aren't. So that's also a help for those kids. And especially when they're with their friends there and going, this is all something I can do. You know, this is, we talked about the kids in the middle, you talk about that. Because those kids, a lot of them will end up going to some form of higher education, one way or another, whether it be through the trade school, whether it be community college or college. So it gets them excited about it, I guess, thinking about it. And then the other thing is, it sort of tells you, hey, wait a minute, this is starting to happen. And what this, Chloe said, it was caught my attention was, I started to just look at their requirements. Did you hear that in there? Yeah, because all of a sudden, I got the brochure and they're asking questions, representative is there, and what would it take to get into the school? You know, and that's, that can be a wonderful thing and it can be scary thing. But then you find out that there's a college for everybody, that a huge number of colleges will take most students. You know, that's, that's just true. So there's a place for everybody and it's good to see them get excited about that. Um, that's pretty much it for me. So we can go back to Dr. Lawrence.
So, uh, I wanna first thank, um, the high school for doing all that testing. I know it was, uh, something that Chris and I talked about. And, um, we were able to essentially test all of our ninth, tenth, eleventh grade students in some kind of pre-college testing, which, um, I did see an article in Register about one local district that said that they were the first in the county, they believe, to do that. Um, I have to tell them they're wrong. But, uh, because we were the first to do it this way, which I think is the right way to do the PSAT nine to offer our students the pre ACT, um, which is new this year. It's come back on the market. It used to be called the plan. It's changed its format. And then for our, uh, eleventh grade students to take the PSAT ten slash national merit, which allows students, if they score high enough, to qualify for national merit. So again, thanks to Chris and, and my neighbor Cole had a big hand on that. Um, and, uh, I think our students are definitely gonna benefit from that, um, and will continue to work from that. But we did that, um, through kind of a combination of funding. But the district's gonna pick up most of the cost of that. So that's a, a new thing for us. So, um, I'm very proud of that. Uh, Tuesday at City Council, um, I attended a, a quick red ribbon, um, from, they were honoring three students from our high school who, uh, have taken a pledge to be driving on call three. And, uh, I got a phone call and, and police officer said, hey, can you come down and, and, uh, just take a picture? Of course, I was handed some kind of script and said, read this. Um, we love the police department. The mayor said, here, you read it. And. I don't think it was a hundred percent accurate, it was too, it was with me at the time, but, um, so I wanna say all the, the three students now, um, on the record. And, uh, so it's Callum Nielsen, Paige Hessler and Lauren Nolan were the three students that they were honoring. And, um, special thanks to them and their parents as well who came down. And as I mentioned, the parents have a lot to be proud of as well, uh, for their students that have made that commitment. And you could tell the parents were very proud. It was all smiles. So I appreciate the city council for doing that, uh, to honor our students. Uh, we have our blue boo blast artwork from Amoral on the wall behind me. So I didn't draw these, these are students drawing. But, uh, the winner is, is there in the middle, uh, for the, uh, T-shirt. And, uh, we had winners for each grade level, but, uh, there would be overall winner was that, that was the one, that's the one on the T-shirt. So special thanks to, to Chris and, uh, and the C T staff for, uh, letting us have a little fun artwork on the wall for, uh, for Halloween.
Who knows the student's name?
Uh, yes, Maggie Wang.
Maggie Wang.
Just the, she's in fourth grade.
Four grades to Maggie.
Yeah, fourth grade, fourth grade students.
Fourth grade.
Um, Rocket Ready was this, uh, this last week on October eighteenth. Uh, we have about thirty plus teachers at Thurston's using the new Arriba span board that's there. If you get a chance to go see it, it's quite impressive. And I appreciate Jenny for hosting all the teachers. It definitely makes parking a challenge at Thurston's. But, um, it was a great day and both Lisa and I had an opportunity to speak, uh, to the staff about, uh, changing culture and, and experience that we've had in our, uh, times, administrators doing that. Dodgeball, as we've mentioned, uh, we had quite a few staff walking around with very sore shoulders, uh, two days after. Unfortunately, this, the staff team didn't do as well as, as they had hoped, but they did kind of a valiant effort and it was fun to go out and watch. Um, I, I was there with the, the duration of watching, the little ones play, as kind of mentioned, which was way more, um, low key than the adults, as you mentioned, were aiming for heads. Though you get kicked out if you hit somebody in the head, it did slow some people down before I get that fast enough. So, uh, quite impressive. It was my first opportunity to kind of watch dodgeball. And, uh, we had some fantastic referees out there.
Yeah, we did.
So keeping, keeping a lid on things and, uh, just a fun time. So thanks to school power for that. And we did our leadership team meeting this last week. We've been working through your strengths finders, which is, uh, Gallup puts on, um, survey. And we've been kind of working through that as a leadership team. I was very proud of the work that we did with everybody in the room. And talking about our five top identified strengths, I think we all learned a little bit about each other, um, and ourselves, actually during that time. I've done it several times over the, uh, many years. And it was actually facilitated, uh, by somebody who works in coordination with Gallup. So it's even better that I got to sit back and be a participant versus having to lead with it. And I think the staff had a lot of fun with that as well. And, um, so we'll be continuing that as one of our areas of focus this year. Uh, special thanks again for Coffee Break. I know, uh, that was something that, uh, I was, I really enjoyed that speaker. And actually, he gives out his, his phone number to text him and I text him, you know, thank you and I had a great time. And he, he texted me back that he was waiting for his, you know, his next transition to his next speaking engagement. And said, I loved, I loved being there. Um, he had a lot of nice things to say about the view, um, from the hotel again. Um, he was very intrigued by the view and would willingly come back and speak anytime if he got to speak in that room. So, um, that was nice. And I did spend a lot of time at his sites, uh, the last couple of weeks. Um, I saw Mr. Sealan at the Thurston trying to use the new, you know, Arriba span board and try and figure out. And his students were putting stuff up around, uh, all the different time periods and, um, for the earth. And working from that on the, and it's, it's in a massive board. So it's like forty feet long, something like that. So the students are putting stuff up and trying to put it all in order and moving it all around. And so, uh, it's, the kids' eyes light up when they see the, the board. And actually, uh, Richard didn't, he said, gosh, if, if there was somebody here videoing this earlier, they would have, this would have been an advertisement for, uh, their board. Because the kids were just all over the wall, moving things around and it was, uh, quite impressive. Um, I also spent some time in, in Mrs. Davidson's class at Top World. And she was doing a lab on absorbancy in pennies. And it was funny because I actually ran into a student of the soccer field, uh, a couple, the day after on Saturday. I asked him, how'd the lab go? He said, it took seventy-eight pennies to, to get in that paper towel to break. And so, you know, listening to students and the smile on his face afterwards, uh, definitely, um, he was very engaged, had a lot of fun. He was learning a lot about paper towels and absorbancy versus, you know, wax paper and what it does. So, um, again, great, great times there. And then last thing is the high school homecoming game. Not only did we win, which was obviously fun as well, but the students were very involved. And, um, uh, and there was mention of our particular, uh, A F B president, I believe, who has more energy than the energy of the bunny. Um, but just really does get the, the crowd engaged. And, uh, Krista does a great job, Steph does a great job of keeping him, uh, on point. It's where he belongs and, and not, uh, following the balls of the trees. But he, uh, he definitely is, uh, what we, you know, want in keeping it positive and focused on our students and, uh, and the great work that's happening on our football career for our students and our coaches. And, and I was just impressed with the crowning and the halftime shows and all the dancing and all that stuff goes along with it. Just a lot of fun to be there. So I appreciate, uh, all the effort that the high school staff put into that event.
Thank you. Dean, you got some of that?
No.
No?
He's not feeling well today.
Oh, well, let's make a few words.
Lisa or Alicia?
Alicia.
Alicia.
Okay, uh, so I'm continuing my teacher meetings and school acts. It's just been a pleasure. This is my extraordinary staff of teachers. So, um, I've had the opportunity to finish all my meetings at, um, Amoral. And I'm, well, on my way, I started it, um, Thurston too. So I'm really excited about that. Um, I wanted to point out, we have a flyer in the back for, um, for our how to pay for college, PAFSA A B E five forty meetings. Uh, for families that, for students who are not born in the U S A, how you afford school. Um, so we'll have a meeting to support our families with that. There's a flyer in the back if you're interested. Um, and that's on November seventeenth. Um, what we found is that if students believe there's an avenue for college, sometimes keeps someone plugged in for school. So I'm really excited about that. I wanna, um, commend, um, Dustin and Chris Study for, um, coordinating the high training at their site. And Kristen Khan invited me in. I got to see a bunch of students do a thirty-two second Macbeth. That was pretty extraordinary. Um, and I wanted to also commend, um, Chris and his team on some of the college roundup. Great job.
Great.
Lisa.
So, um, tomorrow night, as, as many of you know, we'll be honoring Kim Adams one more time at the Teacher of the Year Dinner. Um, just all of the Orange County districts. Um, so we're looking forward to that. And we have our first, um, reclassification meeting with C S E A on Wednesday to help us get organized for the year. Schedule down our meetings and then we'll, um, set, set some goals for the upcoming year. That's it.
By the way, I had a board member just calling tomorrow. Dean.
Oh, good for you.
That's good.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, hearing your report recently really taught me, which really taught us how to respond to interactive learning, which is just so much more engaging than just sitting and being, um, receiving.
It's a lot of fun.
Good.
That then brings us to Jen, who's gonna do a presentation about our middle school.
About the middle school. Uh, okay, so I just wanted to start off and say that at Thurston, with our seven hundred and sixty-six students, our thirty-three classified, our forty-three certificated, uh, that we work tirelessly, um, to connect and focus each and every day on the whole child. It's a passion if everybody's there, even on a day where we have two lightning strikes, um, really close to the campus and a snake. Um, good days. Okay, so our belief that the social emotional well-being of a child is vital to their academic success. I think we can all agree, if they feel comfortable in their environment, they're gonna learn what they need to learn. And that keeps us moving forward every day. Tonight, I just wanna share three areas that we can, that connects our vision of the continuous development of the growth mindset, which is what they're learning at the elementaries, to a resilient middle school student. So I just wanted to share tonight, uh, we're gonna talk a little bit about our academics, about our school culture and about our professional development. So I'll start with our school culture, which would also be our social emotional well-being, right? If they feel comfortable, they're gonna excel in the classroom. So one of the things that we have learned is, uh, we have seventy-seven percent of our students on our California Healthy Kids Survey that we got the results back in January of two thousand sixteen, reported that they are, um, connected on our school campus. And that actually is an increase by eight percent. And that actually is an increase by eight percent from the previous time that we had taken it in two thousand fourteen. Still not good enough, if you guys know me. Um we need to improve that even more. So we work really hard each and every day to to make them feel comfortable to want to come to school. Um so one of the things that we do in October specifically is we kick off this huge Unity Month. Um it starts with the first Wednesday of the month that Lisa Brackes went into all the P E classes in the gym and they sit down on the floor. And she does a great outstanding presentation on being the upstander, not bystander. Uh the kids, after watching a few videos, having conversations, uh enacting certain roles, have the opportunity to make a pledge to be kind on our campus. They tie an orange string on a rope and then that rope hangs up in the middle of the campus for the entire month of October. Uh we had each Wednesday of October, um pals, A S B, or leadership did a unique activity on our campus to just get the kids involved and participate, uh whether it was a pledge poster um or or different things around the campus. On the Unity Day on October nineteenth, everybody wore orange. Uh pals was out there. They were doing post-it kindness post-its that they were putting around the campus. Uh leadership was out doing kindness shout-outs um with music and our A S B was uh doing a chalk drawing. So it's just ways to get everybody involved so that there's a little something for everybody that's happening on the campus. Um our goal, this isn't a one-time thing. This isn't just in the month of October. We continue this each and every month. The first Monday of the month is Kindness Monday, our Kindness Day. And we carry a message out somehow throughout the whole year so that we're repeating those uh that information all year long. Um and it works really well. Uh we also this year did our first web implementation. Web is where everyone belongs and that's the middle school version to link. So we were here last year at a board meeting and I heard Mr. Herzfeld talk about link and I thought, oh, we could do that too. We could probably try to do it better. I mean, it's just what I do. I'm sorry. Um but on that orientation day before school started, we had over eighty-five percent of our sixth graders show up for that orientation day. A day that got them integrated into our school campus and our culture. So we had our pals students be trained in the spring, then they came on that day, they showed them around, they gave them their schedule, they got their books, they got to walk the campus. They gotta be part of what was happening um on our campus and the sixth graders loved it. And the best part about web is that second semester, we're gonna do phase two, which will be a tutoring or a scoop of intervention for certain kids that just need that support from a pal advisor on our campus. So it's just been a great addition to what we've been doing. And then one of the things that I'm really proud of that we've started this year is our T M S talks. And if you're familiar with what a TED Talk is, a T M S talk, we have twenty of them this year, ten first semester, ten second semester. They're during our E S P. They're voluntary. Um each time during the E S P, we've had about thirty kids show up in there. Right now, it's provided by some of the staff members. Our counselors did one on um stress management at the end of the six weeks. We thought that would be timely. Uh Brad Rush, our school psychologist, did one on bothering versus bullying. Um we had our leadership kids do some on organization, how to be successful at Thurston, uh with the goal, and I think Dr. O'Deepo is coming this Thursday. And the goal is really for the kids, if they have a passion or something that we might not even be aware of, that they will be able to do a TED or a T M S talk, maybe second semester or next year. So I think there's a great vision there for it to really be um an opportunity to show off their voice and and get connected with things that are happening. We're really excited about that. Uh we also focus on academics and I don't know if you noticed, but that's actually Mr. Rothman and Claire Tignor. So uh we went to science camp, which we do every year. Uh we they've been back about a month now. We took three hundred people over to Catalina, uh two hundred and sixty-three, I think, sixth graders, eleven staff members, including our amazing district nurse, um Pam Match, who is just amazing, along with Elizabeth. I mean, you too, Elizabeth. But Pam went for all four days.
She went.
Um and just ten other staff members. And it's just a phenomenal experience for all the students over there. I feel like Lisa Brackes did a great job coordinating that event along with Megan Mathias, who helped us out with some of the organization and the um getting everybody over there. It's an amazing experience. Bjorn Avila and Richard Seeland have worked with Nancy Caruso, a local scientist expert to uh really increase the rigor of the lessons while they're over there. So that the curriculum that they're learning there is trans- um forwarded back here to Thurston Middle School so that they're continuing the data, they're continuing that ongoing learning. And it's just has been a huge success for us. Um we also have been focused, sort of big focus for us at Thurston this year will be N G S S, which is Next Generation Science Standards. In fact, tomorrow I am going with Mike Morrison and our five science teachers. We're going down to San Diego. We're gonna go to Pacific Trails Middle School. We're gonna view some of their classrooms in science and see what they're doing with STEM, see how they're handling the transition um with N G S S, integrated or alternate. Um so we are excited about going down there. I'm excited about building that time with the team and giving them these experiences to see what else is out there so that we can do a better job when we're coming back for our district days. Uh we are also going next Wednesday to Torrance. They are in integrated. They've actually been practicing the integrated model for several years. So we're gonna go over there. We're gonna watch them do a teacher training just so we can be exposed to these ideas. And that way, when we do our next district day on November fifteenth, we have a solid understanding of where we need to be going. Um and the teachers are really excited about that. We're also gonna see a Think-a-Bit space, um which is similar to like a maker space or a a um STEM lab. So I'm looking forward to seeing what all of this looks like so that we can bring it back and do the best job at Thurston. In our language arts, we have our piloting this year, our study sync book, and it's an amazing program too, uh which supports all general ed students that also aligns with our E L. Um it is a great uh resource for us that we're piloting. The teacher, it's so different than a traditional English textbook. It's very interactive. It has over a thousand uh digital library books, novels. So someone like Laura Silver, who might have traditionally taught this one novel over a period of time, it's they you can teach a thematic unit and then you can pull out different lessons or different reading texts so they can read this article or this paragraph that ties into this theme. Um it's just and then they can sub- like send out a reading sample to everybody and it can be at everybody's individual levels. So it's the same story that it just supports each individual learning. It's really an amazing um curriculum. And I think the best thing is anytime you pilot, it's amazing to see the five language arts teachers fired up to do this. It's work and they're excited and they're enthusiastic and they're working hard. In fact, at the end of the six weeks, they gave a pre-benchmark on narrative essays. Um and what the pre-benchmark is, is they give them three different essays to read or newspaper articles, I should say. And then the kids had to listen to a five-minute video and then they have to write a narrative on what that was, which was about robotics. Um and then they spent the day, the language arts teachers spent the day calibrating all the different ratings so that they could all kind of come to, yes, this would be a four, this would be a three. And then they're gonna go back and do um teach the narrative unit based on the data from their pre-benchmark, right? So they, oh, you guys actually knew this. I can focus on this. And then they're gonna give the benchmark again in the end of January. So language arts has just been on fire. They're absolutely amazing. Um and it's nice to see them working together and enthusiastic about the new curriculum, which we're piloting. Oops, I gotta go back. I forgot them. Okay, so CASP, um one of the things that we like to focus on on our site, we know we it makes a difference whenever we focus on something as a school-wide goal. We did it last year with writing with Charlotte Knox. We knew we need to increase our writing. We trained everybody. We saw a huge growth with our students. This year, we're seeing that uh we need to focus on our listening claim and we would like to increase it by ten percent this year. What we're finding is that the skill of listening uh through a video or just listening to something and answering questions is something that a middle school student needs to work on. And uh I can give you an example that uh in social social studies in eighth grade, they're working on ListenWise. And it's a program where kids are listening to maybe a three-minute just audio, uh NPR, like a radio announcement. And then they have to answer questions and it's a really hard thing for them to focus for three minutes with no visual uh and 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 actually absorb. It's a hard skill for all of us. My husband can work on that a little bit. Uh but they it's just a great opportunity for for our students and for our eighth grade social studies teachers. We're kind of taking that on this semester. Um and we know that it makes a difference when we focus on it as a school. So second semester, that is our goal, school-wide. So that's what we've been doing with our CASP. We are going to increase that listening claim by at least ten percent. Okay, so that's Sarah Schaefer. And one of the things that we're doing in professional development that I think is really cool at Thurston is we work on our cross-curricular meetings. And this is during our P L C times that we've kind of blown through the traditional department we meet often and frequently as a staff in a variety of different relationships with our classified, with our counselors, with our campus supervisors. Everybody works together as the whole. So what we have are this year, this semester, we've had all this training going on for the past couple of years. And I think we've, I heard occasionally that there was a lot going on. We need time. So one of the things that we want to to implement this year, this semester, is time during our cross-curricular meetings for them to come up with an essential question. You have all this training. What do you actually wanna do in your classroom or on the campus? So um we have forty-one possible missions because we set it forth as what was your mission that you were gonna work on this semester? And different people have worked in groups or individually. It's their choice, the staff. But it's just a great, um I'll reach to you guys. This one from Anderson and Mathias, their eighth grade social studies, which goes into the listening claim. Their essential question is, how does the ability to speak and listen effectively help students to better identify a claim, evidence, and reasoning in multiple formats? The outcome is, their hope is to increase our students' listening and speaking by ten percent. So it still aligns with our district goal, but they're really taking ownership on their own in their classroom. And they are realizing that this is a skill we need to improve on. So it's really nice. Uh and then our M T S S, our multi-tiered systems of support. We have at least ten uh scoops of support or intervention. You've heard me talk about scoops of support forever. And I feel like um it's a fluid list. It's based on our needs on our campus and what we can do to support the individual kids. We meet every six weeks as a staff. It's voluntary to come to the M T S S meeting, which is during our P L C time on a Friday morning. And with it being voluntary, I bet you we have ninety-eight percent of our staff that show up. It's an amazing hour where we use the data to support the kids on our campus and what we can do. And I really have to say, rarely hear, yeah, well, Johnny doesn't bring a pencil. It's not that kind of conversation or environment at all. It's what can we do as a staff to make sure that Johnny is successful? And then we talk about what worked in your classroom, what worked when you saw him in the office, how can we best support him? And I mean, the meaningful data that is shared amongst the staff, um it's just really, it's inspirational, I think. And we meet every six weeks and it's one of the reasons that Thurston um is a platinum-level school. I got that in. Fifteen in the state because we use the data and we're using our grades and our citizenship and our attendance and our areas of information. And we're using the data to best support the students. And are we are we absolutely perfect? Never. Uh our goal is to continue to use the benchmark data that we use through illuminate to get that into the classroom to find out what we can do to support kids when they're missing a a specific area on writing or math. How do we get them like that extra scoop that way? I mean, we're always uh moving forward and evolving. And then the last thing I wanted to share tonight is we have two TOSAs, Michelle Sha- uh Michelle Martinez and Sarah Schaefer. And they are just really our agents of change. This is our second year that we've had our two TOSAs. They each have a period. It's our think tank during second period. They come up to the office. And sometimes I feel like you can see these papers coming out and like our hairs and pencils and we're just really trying to figure out how we can best um provide our staff with challenging uh activities and and engaging them during our cross-curricular meetings because it doesn't just happen. It's like every great teacher or lesson, there's work behind the scenes. They do an outstanding job and they've changed the culture of the meetings on our campus. Last year, when they were presenting, I feel like sometimes some of the staff members, it's like, yeah, yeah, they're presenting. We're being kind. We know them, right? This year, they come in and you can feel the difference on the campus. We know we're gonna learn. We know we're gonna be asked to think. We're gonna have to push forward and we're gonna have to have results. And I think it's just a huge testament to what Michelle and Sarah have done on our campus. I couldn't do it alone. It's so nice. We build on each other's strengths. Um we incorporate everybody's ideas and it just has made a lot of that possible. So I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Michelle and Sarah. And with all of that, I would say that's what helps us focus on the whole child at Thurston. Um it just makes it very great day, an energetic day every day. So thank you.
Thank you. That we're gonna move on to our set calendars. Are there any items that any of you would like to pull from this set calendar?
Of course, I just, I wanted to thank her.
Oh, good.
And and can you just set the bar for them?
Sorry, guys.
But do anyone report?
Yes. Thank you for all the work.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any thoughts? B?
Seven B, section nine.
Section nine.
Section B.
Section nine. Can I get a motion to approve A, B, with the exception of section nine through L, except hand?
Second.
All favor.
Yeah, but great. Of course, I've uh was not asked about this uh L and and Alicia had that information. That is an addition, but not completely placed on the on the chart.
No, our vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. So um to speak to it now. Okay, so.
Just to share with the others.
Sure. So um although it is a it it is a firm that does many things, we wanna focus specifically with uh, you know, one of their attorneys who specializes in title courts. Um we'd like her to review our processes to make sure that we're in alignment with um the state expectation. But in addition to that, we wanna make sure that we're actually um, we want her to look at our forms to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our teachers as well. So our staff, are are we implementing, is our paperwork getting in the way of full implementation in the way that best supports our students? We just wanna review, just to make sure we're on task.
Okay.
Okay, uh so can they have a motion to approve? I think we already motioned that.
Right.
Well, bear.
Hi.
Now, let's go back to uh uh seven B, section nine. Is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm abstaining.
You were abstaining. Okay, so all in favor?
Hi. Do you need more? That's a pretty much it.
Okay.
So move second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, that moves us to number eight, our financial, our monthly financial updates for West. But we don't wanna do it.
Yeah.
You can just point it.
Sarah.
Yeah, you can take it up.
So this is a routine for this period of time of September, um uh for the financials. There's a major, you know, the first certificate of payroll of the year for September salaries was paid on September thirtieth. So this includes that in certificate salaries on that first page of the twenty-three page report. Starts with page sixty-eight. And uh the our main portion of product tax is not received until um uh December. And so we approved in the previous meeting a interfund transfer which is processed in September. Uh that shows up on the third page uh uh of the monthly report. And uh so you uh you can see that as in in September, the assets and liability changes, you know, uh makes uh is where the 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 uh the cash comes in uh from fund seventeen. And so um the uh quarterly uh trust is also on that same page. Uh we can just report on that quarterly. Uh so so the September thirtieth balance is updated too as well. And the the other major piece probably uh is in fund forty. Um which is on the uh page twenty of the report. And so you see that that fund uh for the capital pool, right, spent one point five million dollars. So some of that fell into the previous year's, the spring, summer project. So uh some of that fell into fifteen sixteen. This proportion of fell into sixteen seventeen. Uh and uh so uh we haven't had a lot of of activities in that fund so far, so that's with the activity that's in that fund. The rest are works pretty similar to uh to the expenses at this point in time.
Chris had this question, but I know you called me and I wasn't available, so I'll keep it going back tonight. I just was trying to understand why that six million show up and and to transfer out and is a transfer in. On the general fund, um on page seventy-three, is a transfer in.
Right.
And then on page seventy-nine on seventeen, that it turns to a transfer. I showed those two places and I spun through.
Yeah.
But I wasn't.
So let's look at look at page um page eleven, twenty-three, or or yeah, they have a number series of the whole, let's just say page seventy-eight.
Right.
Page seventeen, 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 nineteen. So on page seven, so when you see that a temporary interfund transfer like we do for cash flow for the general fund, um it it uh it's not going to uh uh be expensed off over the fiscal year because it's gonna be returned in that same uh fiscal year period. So on the assets and liabilities, we show that there's a liability due to another fund. So you can see on this page that there's six million due to this fund because now the cash is over. Uh so there's two sides entered cash. They're either due to or due from. So so.
So it's because it's temporary.
It's temporary. So that's here on the balance sheet. So you'll see this transfer show up on the balance. It's temporary, so that's here on the balance sheet, so you'll see this transfer show up on the balance sheet. Now, all other transfers that you see that will be made, that are permanent transfers throughout the year, on the next page, there there is an interfund transfer out down at the bottom, you can see seventy-six zero here. But if a fund was going to transfer something out with general fund or transfer in, there's also a transfer in up here, that would show them on the uh income statement if it was a permanent transfer, so.
So I got that now, but I'll remember that if it's temporary.
That was a that was a very good question, yes.
That's the issue with that, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other board discussion on this? Any public comments? Number nine, our quarterly report in the fourth place, in the Williams case, seven, eight, please.
Um so this is our uh quarterly report for Williams case, I mentioned our no comments report.
Any board discussion on this? Any public comments? Moving to number ten, this is an action item, approval of increased hours of instructional assistance, special education from three point five hours per day, ten months per year, to five point seven five hours per day, ten months per year, per year, Lisa.
So this um position, we had a new student move in with special needs who needs um additional aid support. And so um the staff member that we have there to fulfill that works three point five hours a day. And so there's a need, since the student has a longer day, um to be there for five point seven five hours a day.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Second.
We're here on the floor, uh is there any board discussion on this?
So is this the students getting special assistance, not just, is this aid specifically qualified to help him with uh whatever issue we have?
I I don't have the exact details on the student need. But yes, the if the if the aid doesn't have the training now, she will be receiving that to be able to work with this particular student, as all of our instructional aides are.
Okay, okay, I guess, I'll talk to her.
Any further board discussion on this? Any public discussion on this? All in favor? Moving to number eleven, also an action item, approval of an independent contractor agreement with Thinking Maps for path efficiency for English learners, teacher training in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand two hundred and five dollars, Dr. Epo.
Thank you, yeah, this is this uh would be training to support our teachers that work with English learners to learn how to break down language and help students build um language outcomes through all content areas.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any board discussion on this?
And they get materials that they can use on the building?
They do, yes, so uh the the foundation train foundational training is Thinking Maps, so it builds through all of the thinking processes on Thinking Maps, so yes, there is plenty of support and and find your support.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
That's the that's for public discussion, public discussion. Uh with skip twelve, we're going to the number thirteen. Also an action item, approval to award an architectural services contract to Renal, Renal Clark Architects to provide architectural and engineering services related to the site work associated with replacing three modular buildings and adding a music building at the top at top of the world elementary school for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand five hundred dollars, uh can I get that, did it say that?
Second.
Um this is Mr. West, I guess, or Mr. Dixon?
Yes, so uh we would like to to make the switch on architectural services uh for the replacement of portables and the three modular buildings that we're going to be putting on top of the world. Uh they the lot of the design work is already done, they'll transfer that over, um that that process has already been occurring. There's about ninety thousand dollars uh uh on that contract still unused. Um as you know, when we went out and did the the uh R P for architects, we 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 did select several architects, because they they're all were very qualified and very good. So another different different specific benefits and needs. Uh Renal now has been very exceptional on closing out projects and going and helping us with a lot of that, to close out certifications. One of the uh the the issues up here too is related to certifications and closeouts. Um uh and so uh they they've been really efficient and effective for us and I could continue that work. With their contract of uh doing this work for sixty thousand, uh there'll actually be a savings in architectural services uh as we finish this.
All right, any more discussions? Everybody knows what it means, right?
Yes, yeah, I need to see those.
Okay, uh public comment? All in favor? Lastly, I'd like to move to the motion for the national English task for adjournments. All right, all in favor? Our next paper meeting is board of education, it's Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, six P M, and this is West. Please, propose.